Welcome, this is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of October 23rd. Would you kindly join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, and Steve, for the folks at home, we have on the screen our revised agenda for this evening. If you'd be kind enough to pan over there. We're gonna skip over item number five, and we may tackle that later in the evening. Okay, very good. Well, this is actually our first full meeting for October, so we are going to do our supervisor's report. This is a report of financial condition. Well, it looks like it didn't make it to the screen unfortunately, but I will read to you the highlights. This is for the period ending September 30th, 2019. We started with a balance of $8,060,928.93. We had receipts of $649,628. Disbursements of $834,963 for a balance of $7,875,594. You have in your packets the variance reports, a couple of budget adjustments, not many, proposed. And Harry, you have your statement for the Community Preservation Fund, which now stands just shy of $1.5 million.
The part that's in desk, it doesn't show on this report, does it?
Yes, that's all the New York class done.
Oh, that's what the other half of it is?
That's where a lot of the excess is. You see the community preservation.
I would just like to... If you're done, are you done with the CPF stuff?
The CPF, yeah, and we've got a couple of budget adjustments as well.
On the budget adjustment, I just want to mention some good news that I don't think we mentioned before, that one of the adjustments is a grant we got from the DEC toward the costs associated with our e-waste collection. Every year, the town does charge a small fee, depending on what you're bringing, but we underwrite a lot of the costs. And of course, there's a lot of costs that are covered by volunteers. And the Highway Department does a lot of work to do it in the CAC, but that money from the state really helps and shows that there's an incentive to do the right thing with your e-waste, so we're appreciative of that.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you for helping get us get that grant. Okay, are there any questions about the remaining, other couple of budget adjustments that are proposed? If not, I entertain a motion to accept the supervisor's report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we also have the Town Clerk's report, Sue.
Do you want to include the budgets in that?
Yes, please, yes, in that motion, thank you.
Town Clerk's monthly report for September 2019. Total local shares remitted to supervisor as town revenue, Amount paid to New York Ag and Markets for their state and neuter program, $61. Amount remitted to New York Department of Health for marriage licenses, $225. Amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation, For a total, state and local revenue of $6,125.75. Pursuant to Section 27 Sub-1 of the Town Law, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and money received by me, Sue Can-Town Clerk, interconnected with my office. I also, Anne Conway, gave me two abstracts to read tonight. So the first abstract is for July, and it is vouchers 25135 to 25280. The total abstract was $182,376.72. And I certify that the vouchers numbered stated above was processed in the month of July, and they're accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the Town Board. The next one is August 2009. Voucher number 25280 through 25399. These were processed in the month of August. For a total abstract of $223,698.91. And that's the abstracts that were approved for payment by the Town Board. One other thing I just want to mention, I've been getting quite a few phone calls lately from residents, getting very suspicious phone calls. One of the big ones is people calling telling them that their social security card and number has been compromised. And it's been happening a lot, I'm getting a lot of phone calls. I just want to make everybody aware that there are a lot of scams going on, and don't give out any information on the phone.
Yeah, I just received one the other day about my electric bill. And there's a lot of those calls that are being generated as well, so thank you for mentioning that, Sue. For folks at home, typically, your utility does not call you to request information, so you should always try to get a number and then find out more information before you, you know, divulge anything. So that are safe then, sorry. So thanks for bringing that up, Sue. Okay, tonight, for announcements, we have a few announcements. The first one is a very nice announcement. At our next meeting, we'll be honoring him, but we want to let you know that our Town Justice, Jonah Treeboss, was elected the President of the New York State Magistrates Association. We have a proclamation that we prepared to acknowledge his accomplishment, and we want to wish him the best in 2020 and in those endeavors. So that's the first announcement. New in New York, it's election time for some of us and for all of you at home, and we certainly encourage you to participate in choosing who are making the important decisions for your community. New this year is early voting, so there are nine days at which residents can attend any one of five sites throughout Dutchess County. And as you know, elections here in New York State are administered by their counties. And so the closest site for us is Ryan Beck Town Hall. It's not that you would need to go to that one, it's just the nearest one. Nine days, and here are the nine days that are available for you to choose from.
So it's not like normal voting where you have your one spot you're supposed to go and only on these particular days, early voting?
That's correct.
You could actually go to any of those five sites, is that right?
Exactly right. Any one of those five sites will take you, and you can vote. And I believe you'll be voting on a tablet, if I'm not mistaken.
But you couldn't go to a different county?
No.
Because, right, it's gotta be in Dutchess.
It's gotta be in Dutchess, exactly right, yeah. And these are the dates and times, and we have this up on our website, I believe, and I'll double check that and make sure. You can go to redhook.org, and obviously, Dutchess County Board of Elections will have that information as well. So that's early voting. The other announcements I have for this evening are Community Action Partnership of Dutchess County wants folks to know that once again, they are administering their Hudson Valley Cash Coalition, which is an Art Foundation-sponsored aid for folks to file their tax preparation forms, so on and so forth. You can go up to, if you can go online to hv-cash.org, and we'll have some flyers here also at Town Hall. And you can find out how you can go about getting assistance filing for your taxes. Another program that Community Action, which by the way is on East Market Street, I believe it's 31 East Market Street, here in the village of Red Hook. It is a terrific place for folks to stop in and find out all about programs that may be of assistance to you. One of the other programs is Dressed for Success, and that is a program that helps to enable folks to be more prepared for interviewing and to getting jobs into the workforce. And they have a sale where they sell clothes at a discount. This year, it's Friday, November 8, and Saturday, November 9, from 12 to 5. Also Monday, it says the 11th here. It's on South Road, Route 9, in Poughkeepsie, New York, between the Dunkin' Donuts and the post office. And that's something folks may want to take advantage of as well. And obviously, Election Day is coming up, Tuesday, November 5. Polls are open from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. At your normal voting locations. The following weekend, we want to remind you that once again, the VFW will be conducting its very meaningful and important ceremony for Veterans Day. That's November 11, 6:00 p.m. at Memorial Park in Red Hook, and they invite folks back to the VFW to join in some, like, refreshments. So all of these announcements will be on our website, starting tomorrow. Any other announcements, folks? If not, we're a few minutes late for our public hearing on St. Silvio's, and Sue, I won't ask you to read the whole notice, just if you would acknowledge that it was in fact published in the paper of record?
It was.
Okay.
It was posted and put on the website.
Okay, very good. Well, again, to reiterate, the town of Red Hook has been in exclusive negotiations with the Archdiocese of New York on the disposition of the sale of the former St. Silvio's properties. And during the course of that time, the town was asked whether or not it would consider any form of public-private partnership in order to effectuate a transaction and achieve the public purpose goals of having the church open to the community. And the village of Tivoli has been sort of leading the way in discussions and negotiations with a particular party, and it does look like, in fact, that we will be supporting a purchase of the St. Silvio's properties by a family in Tivoli to renovate and restore and repair the properties and open it for a community center and cultural arts center. The properties will be put into a not-for-profit with the goals of accomplishing just that. We are in sort of what we would call the final stages of negotiating that out. We will not withdraw our offer to purchase the properties until such time as there's been sort of the final execution of the specifics related to those documents. But suffice it to say that all the parties feel very excited about the possibility of having those properties remain permanently available to the community at large. So that is the latest update. With that said, I'd like to open the public hearing. Would anybody like to make any comments on that? Yes, Linda?
According to the minutes, the property will be on the tax roll. However, if they're going for a nonprofit stance, will it be on the tax roll?
Well, we can't control exactly what gets put into the not-for-profit, whether or not the properties are acquired by a not-for-profit or be operated by a not-for-profit. But I understand your question, and I don't have an answer for you just yet.
And the other thing, will the so-called Tivoli family be made public so that we know who it is that's purchasing this?
Yes, it will be. In effect, I'm happy to tell you now that the family is the Martin family, Bryce and Helen Martin, who are well-known and well-respected community members in Tivoli.
All right, thank you very much.
At what point will more details about the public partnership, public-private partnership be available? You know, I'm assuming a lot of people will have. Will want to know more.
Yeah.
Do you know?
I think once these agreements are, you know, almost finalized, I think that, you know, they'll be available to the public. The conversations are happening, a lot of it, with the village mayor and trustees, because understandably, it's a property that is, you know, key to that village and nexus to, you know, Village Hall. So as soon as we have more details, we'll provide that. And again, you know, there is no agreement at this time, but we are feeling rather comfortable that we will get there to have that agreement, so. Okay, any other comments for the public hearing? If not, after months of having this, you know, public hearing extended, and with the fact that we've had such good discussions with the Archdiocese, Father Pat, the folks in Tivoli, lots of public input at this time, I would like to make a motion that we close the public hearing. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay. And we are not going to take any action on the subject matter that was the public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, okay. Item number one is a resolution to award for the replacement of our HVAC...
AC?
Equipment, oh, I'm sorry, pellet comment. Linda? Jill?
Okay. I visited the playground today, and I noticed that the sway fun equipment had a little block at the bottom, which is supposed to help with the toe guard. However, it doesn't comply because it came up to my finger, which is two inches. It's supposed to be a half inch or less, so it needs to be filled in. Also, you need some grab bars on the outside, which extend a foot beyond those poles, because you can't get yourself in there. I checked out the swings, the under it was filled in somewhat. You can see that some kids use it again. But I think he's supposed to have pads going over those, so if you know when the pads are going in?
The pads go under the woodchips.
They go under the woodchips. I think they've raised the pads, and just to follow up, there will be another load of chips going in there. They just haven't arrived yet.
You still need the accessible route?
Yes.
Well, yeah, you'll know that because there's a lot of paving that's going to be happening.
Yeah, there's a lot of paving.
It's just a lot to put me there.
That's what was on the original plan, which I'm actually okay when I saw it, but then, in reality, it wasn't there.
No, all the paving's being done at once. Whether we made that later, it's not, we're not doing a piecemeal.
No, I understand that. As long as it occurs. And the other thing, you have not done anything about the Greg Farm Barn as far as accessibility for the handicapped, so I was forced to do the next step. That's it.
Thank you, Linda. Jill, would you like to make some comments?
Yeah, this is the first time I'm making a comment.
Okay.
I guess in keeping in spirit with the playground, there are signs at the park that say, "For the safety and comfort of every park user, dogs must be leashed at all times and clean up after your pet." Since May, I'll try to keep it brief. Walking there multiple times a day can get a little stressful because people make the choice to go to the playground and not have their dogs leashed. And the dogs can sometimes be aggressive, and by that I mean charging at you, you know, growling, barking. You know, maybe you see some pearly whites now and then. Sometimes I have a dog with me, sometimes I don't. If I do, mine is always leashed. I've witnessed other altercations between people, and yesterday just had me upset and angry, and I thought, well, okay, I have to do something about it. I just can't complain, I'm going to come to a meeting. But I didn't know if you could answer, did the, does Chapter 63, what is it, Article 9J about leash law apply for the town? Does that apply also to the rec. park? Is there any way, I got to thinking that signage could be changed there to list the town ordinance and what the fines would be, as well as the animal control officer's number, that people could call when that happens? Because I couldn't find anything on the town website. That was another thing that I wanted to ask. You know, when I searched in the departments, you know, I couldn't find anything, and from what I understand, it's through the SPCA. And what I found out shortly before I came here was Stephanie, is it Fitzpatrick, she's one of the officers. And I actually spoke to her before I came in, and she said she would send more officers to patrol that area. But I don't know, like, what can be done, or what are your thoughts? Do other people bring this up to you?
They do.
Yeah.
They do. And I thought we were getting a little better compliance with it, but it doesn't sound like we are.
No, and probably I see it more because I'm there at least once a day, often twice, so the more you go, the more you're going to see it.
Yeah, we were having problems with people also allowing the dogs in the playground itself, and so...
Oh, that was yesterday, that's where the altercation was.
We'll see, you know, we put up signs, you know, around the playground. I'm telling people, you can't bring your dog on those woodchips. So that's frustrating, okay.
Yeah, but, you know, some people say, well, my dog is friendly, you know, he's a baby. But an unleashed dog is an uncontrolled dog, which has the potential, you know, in a second, to become an unsafe dog. So I just wanted to express that concern. And anything you could do with signage, maybe that would help, along with posting a phone number for people to call. Because if people could start getting tickets, because it says that you can be fined up to no more than $250 for violating anything in there, or tickets issued? Like, can you comment, you know, the past year, how many tickets are issued?
I don't believe tickets have been issued, so I think it's...
I have a non-control report.
Yeah.
But I don't know about that. I don't think any tickets, as far as I know.
But I don't know if people know who to call. Like, if you're there in the moment, if the number was there, maybe you have the ability to change the number, and you had that on the signage, maybe things could get better for people, and people would feel more safe.
It was authorized to do the tickets.
The dog control officer.
Which would be the ASPCA.
ASPCA.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the problem is with them being in Poughkeepsie or, you know, Hyde Park, you'd have to call and then to get there. Right, hope that they get there in time to. But it's something in it, maybe if the same description of the dog keeps coming, you know, I don't know, it can't hurt, and it might help. And also, I know she's kind of going all around the area, so if she was nearby, then she could...
Well, she mentioned officers, so I don't know if there's other people under her...
There may be multiple, yeah. I mean, the contract is with the whole ASPCA, so there may be one.
And I just was looking at her name, I apologize, but yeah, there's somebody who's assigned to Red Hook Prime.
Okay, good.
An officer.
So you consider changing signage and adding a phone number?
Yeah, well, it sounds like we need to have enforcement.
That too.
I mean, we have, like, records of how many loose dogs have been reported in and found, but not, as far as I know, no tickets have been issued, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Joan, sorry.
I'll make sure the website has, maybe add "dog control" to the contact list, because it looks like, I think because they're not an employee, they wouldn't add it, but they probably should, because that's where people will go to look for the number, so I'll make sure that gets added.
I know they change that officer from time to time, but we can keep on top of it.
We can just say "dog control officer" and not have a name, and then have the number, and that will take care of that.
Okay. Any other public comments? Okay. We have, for our first item, we are replacing our HVAC, a rather outdated and inefficient HVAC equipment. Part of the funding comes from the $100,000 award that we were given for being only the fourth township to be declared a clean energy community. And so, part of the funding comes from that grant. We went out to bid for this equipment, and we had our lowest responsible bidder, and that is Family Dan's Mechanical. And they will be installing three new units in the various parts of the building. And we will have remote access and monitoring of the system, so we'll be alerted if there's a problem with the system and we're not here, which is terrific. And so we have a resolution. That resolution would be number...
101.
101. Dated October 23rd, it's authorizing the contract award for the replacement of HVAC equipment at the Town of Red Hook Town Hall project. And it is for a total contract price of $46,638, and it's Family Dan's Mechanical. And I so...
Second.
Any further discussion, all in favor? Aye, thank you very much. We have our resolution number 102, so I have a little good news, which I shared with the seniors over at the community center, which is that our state funding to match the federal grant that we had for the two electric vans to take both our seniors and those with, you know, physical challenges, a wheelchair lift, accessible van, two of them, all-electric. So we got the federal grant, and then the state pool of matching money went away, but now it's back. And so we've gone out, done a mini-bid through a state contract for those two vans, results of which will be back November 13. And so we are doing what we said we would do, which is get more charging stations in anticipation of that. And the state has opened up more money to reimburse us for those constructions as well. And so we went out and got estimates, or we did a RFP on that one. And the bidder for that is Plugging Stations Online. It's for more charging. The software that's required as part of the charge-ready program is included, and the funding comes from the state. And any remainder will go from our Clean Energy Communities $100,000 grant award. And so that's 102, authorizing the Town of Red Hook to award a contract for electric vehicle charging stations at the Town of Red Hook Town Hall parking lot. And I so move.
They're going to be right next to the ones that are there.
They are going to be just opposite. Thank you for asking for clarification. They're going to be just opposite those four spots.
So there'll be a total of four?
There'll be a total of four, opposite the total of four that we have now. There'll be a total of eight altogether. There's a second, is there further discussion? If not, all... If not, all in favor? Aye, thank you very much. We have a resolution authorizing the execution of a revised IMA regarding the flail mower, and we've been talking about this for some time. Our Highway Superintendent has recommended that we join with our brother in municipality, Ryan Beck, Clinton, and Mylan, to have an additional attachment to the mini excavator that we share. And we do as much as we can to share equipment with the municipality. And this attachment, which would cost the four municipalities about $9,000 and change as a flail mower, our share would be $2,000. And it's our resolution number 102. Have it?
103.
103, thank you. Our share would be...
It's authorizing you to execute the primary...
The overall. The uh, well.
It does on the list, but the cost is.
It does, it does here in the purchase, it's two thousand four hundred and four dollars, it's in the IMA here in section two. Twenty-four oh four, and uh the the lowest bid is from Westchester Tractor Inc. out of Brewster. So that's one oh three, and I so move, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Uh, ju- just one question, the original share was among just three towns, right, for the mini excavator?
Sure.
Yeah, four.
No, we had an interim draft, Teresa was working with a few committees to try to work out an agreement, and it, for a while this summer, we had three parties. But then, after people talked about it a little more, four of them wanted to.
So we have four on the mini excavator, and this is the uh.
Four.
Something for the flail.
Yeah, we only had three initially on the flail, that's what perhaps you were.
Right. Yeah.
They're back, they're all together, working out.
Okay. All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're gonna skip five and come back to that. Uh, number six is a resolution to approve, uh, we, sorry, number four.
Number four.
You just did it.
No, number four is authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services for the water systems operator.
Oh, four.
That's resolution one oh four. We went out to bid, um, for our uh water district operator, and the successful bid, um, was for BRI, environmental services. They were the lowest responsible bidder. They are actually our current operator as well, and their bid was for.
Twenty thousand one hundred and sixty.
Twenty thousand one sixty.
Per year.
Per year, monthly installments of sixteen eighty. And so this is uh authorizing the execution of the agreement, and I so move. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion, if not, all in favor, aye, all right, we are back to our next item, number six. It's resolution number one oh five, dated October twenty-third, twenty nineteen, authorizing the town of Red Hook to award a contract for judicial court shared services study. This is a shared services initiative, um, it's a four municipality initiative, the town of Ryenbeck took lead on this. It's funded by a Dutchess County Municipal Innovation Grant, that uh the municipalities were awarded or or almost fully funded by that grant. And, um, the town of Ryenbeck was lead, um, they went out to bid, uh, we worked with uh the county procurement specialist. And uh the recommendation is to award the contract to La Verge Group. And this is a study for the folks at home, we are looking at how we might possibly um share our facilities and our staffing, um, keeping our courts separate. Because the revenue is separate, but how we might uh work together to make it more efficient, uh, both in terms of cost and providing the best possible service uh for our residents. So it's resolution number one oh five, authorizing the town of Red Hook to award a contract for judicial court shared services study. Um, it talks about how the town and village were awarded the grant, um, how the town and village, um, issued the, uh, of Ryenbeck. With the assistance of Dutchess County issued a request for proposal. And the town of Ryenbeck has coordinated a review of those proposals received in response to the RFP, including representatives of the town and village of Ryenbeck and the town and village of Red Hook. And has recommended that La Verge Group be engaged to complete the project, and it's for a total lump sum of thirty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. And I offer the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, if not, all in favor, aye, thank you very much.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh. Uh, included in that is that we have on a couple of occasions now, uh, the last that I mentioned was for the shared courts. Um, we have used, uh, the procurement specialist that is employed by Dutchess County. We've used, uh, her for particular, um, bidding requirements for specific jobs. And all we are doing now is authorizing an an extension of that intermunicipal agreement, should we wish to do so again in the future. And this would be an extension for one additional one-year period from November first, twenty nineteen, to October thirty-first, twenty twenty. And there's no cost associated with it, uh, until we decide to use those services. And this is resolution number.
One oh six.
One oh six, thank you very much. Extension of an existing IMA and I so move, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, we're gonna do some board reports now. And Christine, if you would be kind enough to uh give a summary of the planning board report.
Okay. Uh, in October, the planning board met twice, once October seventh and once October twenty-first. For, on October seventh, for a new business, they handled a certificate of appropriateness just outside of Tivoli. For in addition to a residence in a historic overlay district that was, um, approved, well, they did that type-two seeker resolution, waived the public hearing, and then they granted it. Um, in other business, they had a pre-application discussion with the old Ryenbeck aerodrome, uh, and that continues. They also did a Hamlet design review for the LWRP regarding the Empire State Trails. Um, and gave uh feedback on that. They approved an extension request for previously approved subdivision called the Preserves at Lakeskill. And uh they reviewed an application extension also from Rose Hill Farm. Um, and they are waiting still for Health Department approval, so that extension was granted. And there is also a uh request from a project on Old Farm Road. Rugies, uh, asked for a hundred and eighty-day extension request. What are they looking for, they are looking for, they're working on highway improvements and entrance designs. Um, and that was granted a ninety-day extension. And then they spent some time on the um proposed Empire Trail state improvements. And made four recommendations to New York State Department of Transportation. One is to remove the advanced pavement markings proposed up to speeds, proposed speed tables on the road. Um, because they are proposed to be made with reflective paint, uh, paint, which will detract from the rural scenic character of the roadway. Two is to eliminate two speed tables and related signage, as they do not appear to be necessary for safety. Three is to reduce the number of signs indicating the speed tables north and south of the entrance to Poets Walk Park. Uh, and fourth, to widen the existing Annandale path along the west side of County Route one oh three on the Bard campus. To accommodate bicycles and extend the path south to Montgomery Place, uh, the west side of the stone wall on that property.
Thank you, Christine. I wonder if the folks at home wanna know why the old Ryenbeck aerodrome is in front of the town of Red Hook?
Well, because they're in the town of Red Hook.
That's right. It's in the town of Red Hook.
I think that, um, the Empire State Trail part of the report, I think a lot of people will be interested in, because people have been seeing, you know, some of the.
The work that's happening, getting ready for that.
You know, when there's sort of like bits and bit pieces here and there about what's going on. I suppose that's reflected in the minutes that people want to see how that was discussed, but in any word, right?
At the planning board, yes, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Great.
There were info sessions early on, and it still continues, the planning continues.
Right, and so for anybody that's not familiar with it, all the work that's been happening near the Kingston Ryancliff on and near the Kingston Ryancliff Bridge. Is to, um, get ready to have the Empire State Trail opened, and it, when it, once it comes across the bridge, it will head north on, um, Annandale Road. And that's why this discussion is happening, and there's a lot of, um, planning and reviewing options for how. That trail could be accommodated along Annandale Road all the way north through Bard, um, until the project, or the proposed trail then goes through Tivoli Base to connect over to the village of Tivoli.
Thank you very much, Christine. Bill, uh.
Did the ZBA?
Very brief ZBA report.
The ZBA didn't meet in October, and the next meeting is November sixth. Thank you.
That's about as brief as it gets, yeah. Okay, Sarah, uh, Red Hook Monthly Dog Control Report.
Okay, this is for the month of September. Since we're still in October. We had zero dangerous dog complaints, bringing our yearly total to two. We had two loose dog calls, zero nuisance dogs, and one wildlife slash cat, oh, it's a good cat. Call, uh, two dogs were found to be running at large, those were the two dog complaints, and there was a severely injured cat, um, that unfortunately had to. Be put up in its misery, very sad, but, um. Just a reminder to everybody, as Joel said, to keep your dogs, well, not all your pets really, but like on your own property and safely leashed, or they need to be leashed. For the health and safety of everybody, including themselves.
Great, thank you very much, Sarah. Uh, Bill, you have a police department report.
Yeah, the police department report, which uh has been given to everybody on the town board, it cites the individual incidents as the location. The total summary for September of two thousand nineteen was, um, eighty-eight incidents were reported to the Village Red Hook Police Department, they acted upon the eighty-eight. There were a total of four arrests made, and a total of fifty-nine tickets issued during the month of September.
Okay, Harry, we have a water district report?
Uh, we do. Water district reported is very much like previous months, all of our regular monthly testing came back normal. Which is good, there's ongoing maintenance on various aspects of of the system. Had some hydrant flushing, um, and some 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 repair work in in various homes. Quite replaced the roof vent on our storage tank. And we have, um, hired our our contractor who maintains the system for another another year.
Harry, you might wanna mention that there is hydrant flushing scheduled for eleven, four, and five.
Yeah, I I I I noticed that, I'm a little concerned about that, I mean, we're just out there promoting, making sure everybody. Has the availability information to go vote, and then we're turning off the water for a while on them on election day, doesn't quite seem to be wise decision.
Well, they gotta do it.
So they don't draw the water.
No, it's just dirty, just dirty.
It's wow.
It's kinda rushing them out.
It's it's only. That's that's equivalent to turning the water.
Your tax dollars at work, Robert. Oh, oh, sorry.
It's only gonna be done on the dead ends, not on every hydrant.
Well, I did, I did see a couple of reports of of, uh, some brown water, some folks.
Well, well, you know, when they flush, no matter where it is, it creates, that creates a brown water.
I don't think it's gonna affect people's, but I would worry.
Harry, um, would you be kind enough to summarize the building and zoning report?
Yes, it's a, as usual, it's a very, even extensive report, we must have a lot of activity. Fifty, or twenty-six, um, permits issued, eleven inspections of construction, and seven certificate of occupancies. That says that seven, seven, uh, projects were completed. And the revenue generated for the month was five thousand six hundred and two dollars. That would have been for the, for the price of permits, et cetera.
And it would probably be a good time to thank, uh, the folks watching at home for your patience, uh, with the building and zoning department. Uh, as I think we've mentioned before, Steve Cole, who's been with us for many, many years, had to be out, uh, for several months, and he's back, we're very excited that he's back. And, uh, you know, we will have, hopefully, uh, you know, operations will continue as they were before, so we thank you for your patience if you had to wait, um, additional time. Because of that, we did our best to sort of cover the office in the meantime. Okay, uh, next up. Disaster Preparedness Committee, uh, the local disaster plan has incorporated changes as suggested by, um, our attorney to the town. And given to the committee for review, a PDF of the plan will be available soon for distribution. Um, they have a new member to the committee, and that's the mayor of Tivoli, Joel Briff. Um, we still haven't, uh, found a solution to our nine-eleven signage, but it's something that I hope we can do, uh, very soon, focus on that. Um, as you know, there's a a county law that's been in place for many years that requires you to have, um, a reflective sign with your address. Installed in such a manner that emergency responders and others can, uh, quickly and easily, uh, find, uh, the location of your house. Um, not only from the road, but if it's down a long driveway, um, to be able to discern which driveway to go down. And so, uh, we are looking to figure out a way to assist in making sure that, uh, our emergency responders have that ability. Um, a tabletop drill is something that we would think is very important, um, before an actual disaster occurs. Is to prepare for one and actually to, uh, do a dress rehearsal, if you will, so, um, there is one being planned in March of twenty twenty. The details will be forthcoming from that committee. Okay, Bill, you have another quick one, and that's your, uh, intermunicipal working group.
Yeah, the intermunicipal task force, that weekly meetings in September and October continue to discuss the subject of short-term rentals. I do wanna take a moment to introduce, uh, and brief the town board on the public, uh, meeting which is going to occur next Wednesday, October thirtieth. Here in Town Hall at seven o'clock. It's, uh, been scheduled for a couple of months, it's actually a joint meeting between the Economic Development Committee and the, uh, intermunicipal task force of the town of Red Hook. So the presentation, it's like an informational meeting, um, I I actually will conduct it on behalf of the task force here at the, uh, in Town Hall. And what we propose to do is to introduce, of course, the subject of the task force, how it was established in, uh, by the town board in two thousand four. To act as an ongoing public forum to develop proposals for the board's consideration and potential action on important emerging issues involving planning and zoning. And, um, one of the emerging issues in the town of Red Hook in the past months has been the subject of short-term rentals. And they are defined as any structure where overnight accommodation is provided for transient occupancy for compensation for less than thirty days. So the emphasis is, we're not talking about long-term rentals or sharing houses or house swapings, but strictly short-term rentals, thirty days or less. The first part of the presentation will be to invite everyone in the, uh, audience to say whatever they want about short-term rentals in the town of Red Hook. You know, whatever their opinion is on the subject, that we would record the comments and consider them and continue the dialogue at the future meetings. The second phase of the meeting would be for the task force to share some ideas of how STR's short-term rentals should be guided. So that Red Hook can continue to protect its rural character and preserve its strong sense of community. And so the discussion then would be about current laws, we have a bed and breakfast law, which I'll explain, we have a lodging law, which I'll explain, that have to do with short-term rentals. But that actually, uh, there are no other opportunities for short-term rentals in the town of Red Hook, and the task force believes. The opportunity for short-term rentals should be expanded in all residential districts, and will explain then, uh, what they have, uh, in mind. And for the reason that Red Hook must provide for a balanced mix of short and long-term housing to ensure affordable housing and support tourism, giving visitors to the community places to stay. And, uh, more specifically, the task force believes that short-term rentals must be of the primary residence of the property owner. It should be required to have an annual operating permit filed with the town building department, and that they could be categorized as hosted where a property owner is present. and that they could be categorized as hosted, where a property owner is present overnight with their guests, or unhosted, where a property owner is absent during the rental. And some may require a planning board review, depending upon the intensity, um, of their operation. So then we discuss where hosted STRs would be allowed and where unhosted STRs would be allowed, and the subject of a one-time exemption, which gets in a little bit technical, but we'll describe that also. Um, and then the last part of the meeting will be, again, to invite the audience, the members, uh, of the community who attend, to give us the feedback. In other words, their response to whatever the task force has been, uh, thinking. And that we would record that and consider it, and it'd be made a part of the, uh, of the record um, before, um, any, any final, you know, decision is made or concluded about the subject of short-term rentals. So that's gonna be the approach, if anyone is concerned about what this public hearing is gonna be like. I know some of the members of the board cannot attend because of conflicts, but we will be recording whatever comments are made, and I'll be able to report back to the board, uh, about that.
It's not a public hearing, right? It's just a public meeting, right?
No, it's not, it's not a public hearing, it's just an informal informational meeting. Actually, that the EDC, uh, invited the task force to hold with them so that we could start the dialogue. That's all.
Has it gone out yet on the town email list?
It's about, yeah.
Okay, great. That would be great to make sure people hear about it.
At the EDC meeting this morning, there was a, a lot of conversation about it. They're encouraging people to come. This is bottom line.
Yeah.
What was it? Um, oh, you might also consider in the email, if you have a, a draft report or an outline or something, if people can't attend, you could put it on the website and say like, you know, sending comments before such a date or something if you can't, you know, if you wanna, you know.
Well, I think the idea is not to share, is not to, you know, say, this is what, what's happening. It's more to, to start a dialogue than.
Yeah, sure.
It'll, it'll be going on for most.
I'm just thinking of a way to put people who can't be there, or maybe it's that
Well, it can be sent out afterwards.
Maybe a summary of the meeting or something, you know, but in some way to give people an option.
Right.
Again, not like a public hearing, but in the same way as a public hearing in the sense that like usually gives some way for people to give their opinion besides showing up in person like these kind of people did today.
There's gonna be a series of meetings. Cause this is, you know, if you look at other communities, they've taken their time with this because it's kinda new.
That's very complicated.
Yeah.
They're rather sensitive issues.
Yeah, so we'll wanna get as much input as possible, but yeah, it would be nice to have like a report of what, what's discussed and
We will have it.
Share the public's comments, and then we can put all of that up there, like an info session, minutes, if you will. Speaking of minutes, Harry.
Yes.
Would you be kind enough to summarize John's, uh, recreation commission?
Well, uh, he, he's, uh, summarized the summer rec program, which went, went very well.
Yeah.
Um, the playground is, uh, is mostly completed, uh, which, which probably will not be finished till, till the spring, until we get the delivery of what, the, the additional things we need. Um, the pickleball courts are in, operational. We have created the court rules, along with the, some of advisors who are experts at pickleball. Um, uh, uh, John is re-proposing lighting for the pickleball courts when we take the, the existing bowls down, down out there and move them over to the court area. Um, we, we, we're doing some, we're going to do some work on the, uh, skate park. Uh, not the, the skate park, the, the, uh, yeah, I guess it is the skate park.
Skate park, yeah.
Yeah, the, uh, the, 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 the kids, and some of the kids are young adults. They go, go out there with, in the skate park quite regularly, and they have some requests. So John has been looking into that.
But, Harry, I think the important part to add to that, um, the entire skate park surface was repaired, resurfaced, and color-coded with one coat of the two required. Sadly, skaters ignored the closed signs and the locked gates and all the caution tape and skated on the surface before it was fully cured. And so they had to come and do repair work before they could reapply the first color coat. So this kind of thing is really unfortunate because we are, you know, as, as evidenced by John's very long reports every month, putting a lot of time and thought, as well as money and resources into these projects. And so I just wanna say that publicly, um, you know, that's just very disappointing. I think John goes out of his way to make sure that it's very safe when there's a, an ongoing project. There's the people are really clear, we're to walk, we're to, you know, play and all that stuff. And people could please be respectful of those areas, that would be, that would be appreciated.
Um, there's a note here that John, does John need, is he looking for approval of his new pickleball court rules?
He, he sort of goes around, he's searching about little pieces.
We haven't had a chance to review them. Yeah.
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 Yeah, no, I, I think they pretty much.
This is his, this is what he sends to his commission.
Right.
So when it says if they can be approved tonight, I think he meant at his meeting.
Okay, I just didn't know if they were looking for your approval?
No, not for us, I don't think.
I was at that meeting and they did approve them.
Yeah, they did already approve them. The, the commission usually approves that signage language, so, and we're all on those, those emails. So if you think we should be approving them, you always have. Right. So you might wanna mention that to him because I think sometimes he buries his request for our opinions in those emails, and if, I think, my opinion, of course, I'm an outgoing town board member, if he has a specific request to us as the town board, he may want to send a separate email that's so specifically town board input requested. Cause there's a lot of rec emails, and I can understand why people might kinda not read them, you know, right before the meeting if he's trying to approve them. Can I just mention, I'm sorry, Harry, that I'm biting in so much, but one more thing, which is, I think a lot of people who use the rec park have been wondering about the benches specifically because their absence is rarely notable with the big new playground, um, that's been put in and obviously a lot of traffic there, uh, in terms of people, uh, playing. So there will be lots of benches in the fu- near future. Some of the old benches are being primed, repainted, you know, fixed up, and then we have new benches going in, um, but we, it looks like John has decided that that will be done once the blacktop pathways have been completed. Um, and it's gonna require some special equipment because the holes to dig in the bench legs, if you will, uh, are, are very deep, um, and there's cement that has to be poured, it's very complicated. He literally, and he has to like cut through tree roots sometimes, depending on where the trees are. It's just, you know, of course, they try not to cut through roots, but when they have to, they have to. Anyway, so it's really complicated and, uh, but they will be going in. So I don't want anybody to think we've like forgotten that benches should be there.
Yeah, there's gonna be new, new fencing, new pathways, uh, turtle will return, right? Um, and, uh, more chips coming for the playground, yeah, for sure.
The, uh, the, the, the high school kids have been, have been, uh, operating, going to class over there. They're using the tennis courts. They have a biking program that I think starts there, but, but, uh, that goes beyond the park, park parameters. And, and the girls' interplay's tennis team from the high school is, is working there. Little baseball is going on, little softball. We had a bee problem in the dugout, surprise, surprise. That was taken care of. We've done skate park improvements, uh, that, that's the noisy stuff with the, the skateboard. So, uh, um, and that, that's underway. We've met, met with the, with the, the young people who are, who are no longer, are, are beyond adolescent age, it seems to me, who, uh, have, have desires in the skate park or different equipment. And, and we'll probably be able to do some of that. We're gonna build new dugouts for the baseball fields in, in the spring.
Okay, good. And, uh, just for the folks at home, you've seen probably the construction begin on the west side of Linden Avenue. Um, what you're looking at, if you're looking at where the equipment is, is the beginning of the trailhead parking for the trail system. Um, the, uh, trailhead will reach, uh, the parcels, uh, that are being acquired by Winnick Land Trust, and we will be working with them to obtain a trail easement over those three hundred and thirty-six acres. It's essentially the remainder of the Linden acre subdivision will be permanently protected, uh, with the exception of passive recreation. And so, uh, that's what you're seeing over there. And next up is Sarah to report tree preservation.
Hey, um, wanna jump in if I mess anything up? But here's what was discussed at the October fifteenth cleaning. They've been very busy. Um, they did a, uh, they did a cleanup of a portion of the nature trail at Mill Road School, and they're scheduling a second cleanup for October twenty-sixth. They did their fall tree order at Old Hill River next, you know, November sixth or seventh. Uh, the trees will be planted on the south side of the west end of Pitcher Lane. Looking really good, by the way. Um, we're thinking about, we're thinking strongly of going after a grant out of the D E C for urban forestry, which includes places like us, even though we don't think of ourselves as urban, but, uh, we fit into the category, uh, hopefully some kind of planting maybe in Red Park West. Um, so the tree committee is going to be giving input to the town. I think the town engineer is gonna be coordinating that application. Um, they're gonna continue pruning in Red Church Cemetery this fall and winter. And, uh, they'll be ordering books for next year's arbitrary program. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you very much.
And special consideration, thanks, Mr. Hop, for doing all the mowing around the new trees.
Okay.
A lot of work.
Yeah, I bet.
We thank you.
Kids in three hours.
Thank you. Okay, a very brief senior services committee report. Uh, they're actively recruiting new members. In fact, I noticed, I don't have it in our packet, but Yopana Moore, uh, sent in a letter of interest. And if you, uh, all are willing, I'd like to go ahead tonight and appoint her to the senior services, uh, committee. We all know her and her contributions over the years. Um, and they are looking for, uh, committee members, so. Shall we do that?
Yes. So move, second later.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, thank you very much.
That's true.
All right, they meet at ten a.m. in the conference room at Town Hall on the last Wednesday of the month. Folks, uh, is there any other public comment at this time? We're going to be entertaining a motion to go into attorney-client. Is there anybody else who'd like to?
Two public comments.
Two public comments, please, go ahead, Teresa.
Um, I would just like to come to the mic so I can hear you. Oh, sure. Um, first of all, the highway department is looking for part-time wingman, wingwomen positions, and you can fill out an application online and sign in. Um, secondly, I would like to request in the future that, um, the way the reports are on the agenda are alphabetical, and the reports are first, and the committee reports are second, the department reports. So if you could put the highway department back in that alphabetical order. So if I have a, a report or a comment to make that I don't have to wait until the very end, um, it is alphabetical. Well, I've been asked the past couple of meetings, at the very end of the meeting, instead of in that order, so I respect for the request that we go back to that order if it's possible.
I don't know, that's okay. Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Linda?
We put a lot of time and money into our rec park, and it's quite disturbing to me that we try and improve it and kids are getting in there and messing it up. Is it possible to get some working video cameras of some sort so that we have then a record of what's going on and catch 'em? Just like what's going on with the dogs, catch 'em? Let's do our job.
Uh, we are in the process of looking into that, Linda. We, we actually are, you know, trying to get some communication lines over to the rec park so that we can in fact do that. We wouldn't utilize the video if we were to agree to put video into our rec park unless and until there was an incident and we needed that video to document that incident. Uh, but yes, we are, we are seriously being forced to look at that, something that we never thought we would have to do. But we're already ahead. In fact, Dennis is over here, and he's been in touch with the phone company and the cable company and so on and so forth. Okay. Uh, on that, uh, uh, conclusion of public comment, um, at this time, I would like to make a motion that we go into attorney-client. And first, thank you all for joining us this evening, both here and at home. Is there a second?
Second.
All on favor?
Go ahead.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, please for having me.